All right. Before we start, City Council just met on two closed session items and there's nothing to report out at this time. Good evening and thank you for viewing the August 18th regular meeting of the Arcata City Council. City Council meeting is being held as a teleconference in response to local efforts to reduce the current surge of Delta variant of the COVID-19 virus. If you wish to make public comment tonight during the meeting, whether it's two open public comment periods or for an individual agenda item, there are two ways to do so. If you're logged on to the Zoom meeting webinar, click on raise your hand on the right hand side of your screen. When it's time for public comment on the item you wish to speak on, the clerk will unmute you. You will have two minutes to comment. You can also access the meeting by phone, call the number at the bottom of the screen, enter the meeting ID also at the bottom of the screen. Press star nine on your phone, this will raise your hand. And it's time for public comment on the item on which you wish to speak, the clerk will unmute your phone. You will hear a prompt that will indicate your phone is unmuted, you will have two minutes to comment. And if you care to, please join me on the box.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we please have a roll call?
Mayor Watson. Vice Mayor Atkins Salazar. Councilmember Goldstein. Councilmember Matthews. Councilmember Schaefer. All present.
Next, we have early oral communications, this 15 minute time period is provided for people to address the council on matters not on the agenda. At the conclusion of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Any request that requires council action will be set by the council for a future agenda referred staff. Speakers addressing the council this time are limited to two minutes and we can take up to seven speakers. Please raise your hand if you're on Zoom or press star nine if you're calling in by phone and wish to make a comment. Do you have any public comments this evening?
Yes, we do. First speaker is Bill Hole. Go ahead, Bill, you'll have two minutes, please.
Hello, I assume you can hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good, I'm just testing, okay. Council Mayor, I, Bill Hole, I'm preservation specialist, I live in Eureka and I, and just commenting on, I wanted to congratulate and say how wonderful it is the care and good stewardship of taking apart the granite steps under the McKinley statue and having such good foresight to have the right quality masons there to expedite and take care of the, that historic stone. It was wonderful to see and I just wanted to say thank you. And I look forward to seeing potentially some future wonderful things in reuse with that because it's really well over 100 years of Arcata history and use and I just wanted to congratulate everybody, that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. I just.
Yeah.
If there is anyone else that would like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda this evening. There's no other speakers there. Oh, sorry, we do have. Screaming Doug, Doug, you'll have two minutes, please. Are you able to unmute?
Oh, sorry about that.
You're good, go ahead, you have two minutes.
Thank you so much, my name is Doug Hartley, I am the site manager of Health Sport in Arcata and I just wanted to make comment about the growth of the homeless situation that we're finding impacting our facility and also the community center and the parking lot in that surrounding area. And I've been with Health Sport now since its inception 1992 and really with the pandemic lately, the homeless population within our boundaries has grown tremendously and is creating impact for our business. I have concerns raised every day from our membership, from our staff, is affecting business. And I believe there potentially, we could set an agenda item for the future where we could have maybe further public comment about maybe solutions we might be able to put forth, but technically maybe an ordinance that would allow for a safe place for the homeless, I do believe there needs to be a place for them where they feel safe and not harassed and so forth, but I also feel that that place needs to be such that does not negatively impact businesses or places such as the community center. And also something we've had to call the police out numerous times and they're very gracious and so forth and they're there, however, there's not a lot they can do to enforce the concerns of our customers and so forth, so typically maybe an ordinance that they could follow, therefore they could enforce some things that would be more business friendly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Doug.
Later on in tonight's meeting under the ARPA agenda item, we'll be talking about the homelessness solutions we're working on a little bit and what we might be able to use funding for.
We do have another speaker, Mayor.
All right.
Phone in caller, caller user two, please go ahead. Can you unmute caller?
Yes, this is Oz of Arcata, City Council, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, tonight I'd like to speak more to the public policy that I spoke to last time and I'm suggesting tonight that the council seriously consider another tool in public safety toolbox to give officers recommendations for a legal safe place to sleep at night with protection on service, not the PPP syndrome we've always had persecution, prosecution and possibly worse. It hasn't worked, the criminalization of the homeless started years ago and promised to end homelessness, which is a not bad word, unhoused conditions, there is no one homeless, I was born home, you were born home, they were born home, it's only policy that can keep people unhoused. A legal safe place to sleep with services at night and through the day so that they can get on their way to housing, jobs, mental health, drug, drug abuse services and get this policy, get it right, it's broken. We're spending too much money on public safety and they can't do anything about the problem because it's your policy, that's the problem. Thank you.
Thanks Oz, any more speakers?
No more speakers, Mayor.
Thank you, next we'll move under consent calendar, all matters in the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There's no separate discussion of any of these items, discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members and members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. A, approve the minutes of the city council meeting of July 21st, 2021. B, approve the minutes of the city council meeting of July 28th, 2021. C, biweekly report on general warrants. D, declare continuation of the local emergency related to the coronavirus pandemic. E, adopt resolution number 212-07 supporting the Wiat tribe's declaration of a state of emergency on the Budawat Mad River in response to severe drought conditions. Approve agreement for professional engineering services by Dr. Robert Gerhart. DBA hydro resources in the amount of $49,999 for fiscal year 2021, 2022 and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents. G, adopt resolution number 212-08, a resolution of the city council of the city of Arcata. Amending the class and pay resolution, international union of operating engineers, local number three to reflect title changes to secretary administrative assistant. And adopt resolution number 212-09, a resolution of the city council of the city of Arcata, amending the class and pay resolution. Management, mid-management confidential and appointed employees. H, authorize the city manager to enter into real property negotiations for assessors parcels numbers 021-011-003 dash 004, dash 005, dash 006, 021-121-002, dash 006, 501-044-004 and 503-211-032-034. And I adopt resolution number 212-10, a resolution of the city council of the city of Arcata requesting the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors call for an election on the question of renewing the countywide abandoned vehicle abatement fee to be scheduled in conjunction with the June 7, 2022 primary election. Is there any council member that would like to remove an item from the consent calendar? Any members of staff, any members of the public that would like to remove an item from the consent calendar? Right, seeing none, please have a motion.
Move, we approve the consent calendar.
I can.
Right, we have a motion in a second. And well, I guess we'll just do roll call now that we're back on Zoom, Councilmember Goldstein.
Hi.
Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Hi.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Hi.
Councilmember Matthews.
I.
My vote I, motion carries. And moving on to old business, introduce ordinance number 1547, amending the Chapman House Historic Landmark Ordinance. May I please have a staff report?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. For you tonight is the consideration for introduction of ordinance number 1547 which would amend the Chapman House Historic Landmark Ordinance. Staff is recommending that you consider a staff report, take a presentation from the applicant, consider public comments and introduce ordinance 1547, ordinance of the city council of the city of Arcata, amending the Chapman House Landmark Ordinance, waive reading the text and consent to read by title only. I did focus the bulk of the written staff report on sort of the policy underpinnings, that's what I wanted to sort of address real quickly here. I believe the applicant has some items to say about the project specifically. Ordinance 1547 specifically would exempt the Chapman House from the rental cap, limit rental, vacation rental ordinance cap of 100. All the permits would still be required, it'd still have to go through the same process that anyone else would have to go through. But that was the incentive that the city council approved previously when it first adopted the landmark ordinance prior to the adoption of the vacation rental ordinance. The concept there was to embed certain uses, including vacation rental and several others that are listed in exhibit three of the original ordinance, which is attachment B to your staff report to sort of future proof them against changes to the land use code. And we just didn't consider that when we were adopting the short stay vacation rental ordinance. So essentially, you know, the kind of question that, you know, the policy question boils down to, you know, what is at stake here? We're balancing housing versus historic resources. And both of these policy areas, not only does this council care deeply about, but you know, it's embedded in our general plan and our land use code, these are special area, policy areas where we actually incentivize developments that will provide either affordable housing or historic preservation. And so these, you know, here's a house, it's old, we're pitting these two policy areas against one another. So the historic preservation is rooted in the general plan and the historic preservation element. And in that element, we provide for special uses to ensure preservation, it gives a little bit of flexibility to those resources. Those, those preservation policies were adopted into the land use code and I've given you references within the staff report, I'm not going to belabor those. But the rationale was that the added cost of a historic resource, maintaining that, landmarking it, keep preserving it over time warrants these special incentives that we would provide. And those incentives aren't available to the general public. And that was a, you know, policy driven decision in the land use code. I do want to just share with you real quick, a very short slideshow. And really the point of this slideshow is just to identify for you that, and I'm hoping you can see the whole screen, it looks a little odd on my side. But just to show, share with you that regardless of zoning district, the the city has several examples of historic homes that have been converted to commercial purposes. Many of these are in areas where we've actually zoned these general commercials, so the first three that we looked at were general commercial. This one here is a doctor's office or was converted to a doctor's office explicitly listed in the ordinance that landmarked that structure and so even though it's in a residential zoning district, it's allowed to be a commercial property, here's the Phillips house, it's actually in a public facilities property. So there are several examples of these throughout the city where either through traditional zoning or through the landmarking process, we've authorized other uses beyond the use as a house. And in effect, what our policy does is it treats a historic resource as either and it leaves it up to either, you know, the underlying zoning or this landmarking process to the discretion of the owner to choose which of those is going to be more viable for protecting that resource. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about the ordinance, staff report, the policy or anything else you have, but I know that the applicant has a short presentation that they'd like to present as well.
Yeah, unless there's any burning questions, let's go ahead and get the presentation from the applicant before we go to the council.
All right, go ahead Scott and Sandy, can you unmute yourself?
Good evening, I'm Sandy Hunt and my husband Scott and I own the Chapman House. I'd like to first thank each of you for meeting with us one on one. Taking time from your busy schedule shows that you have a genuine interest in understanding the items presented. We purchased the Chapman property from descendants of John Chapman who acquired the property around 1883 from Thomas Bear. We were amazed that the property had stayed in the Chapman family for 134 years. What attracted us to the property was its history as well as its unique Italianate architecture. As you can see from the photos or video that are being shown which were taken shortly after the purchase, the house still had all its original bones. The fact that it remained largely in its original state was another attraction for us. Building began during the period from 1874 to 1876 and its original construction didn't include plumbing or electricity. These were added much later and were quite limited. We assembled a team of professionals who were not only craftsmen but historians in their own right. People like Bob Felter, Bill Hole and Alex Stillman kept us true to the task at hand and our architect Martha Jane applied her gentle persuasion at just the right times. We carefully restored all the exterior windows and searched for wavy glass to replace broken panes. Countless hours were spent on those windows and now they all function just like they originally did when first installed back in the 1870s. We brought back the widow's walk and the railings above the front porch, all from period old growth redwood. The original chimneys had to be removed when we lifted the house and put a new foundation under it. We scaled the new ones from old pictures to make sure they were accurate. The interior and exterior of the house is all period correct and was recently featured on the State Office of Historic Preservation website. The rigorous process of documentation and meticulous rehabilitation was a much bigger task than we ever imagined. Having said that, the Chapman House was one of the most gratifying things we've ever done, thank you.
Hi, this is Scott Hunt. We were new to historic preservation as it relates to the city of Arcata. Through the permitting process and various meetings with city staff, we learned about historic preservation in Arcata and read on the city's website that quote, "It is committed to the maintenance and preservation of local historic properties and landmarks that continue to define the character of our city," end quote. The Chapman House is a historic preservation project that has statewide recognition. In 2018, the city of Arcata had the vision to enter into a contract with Sandy and I in order to encourage us to have our property designated a local landmark. One of the incentives was that the property could be used for short term stays. In 2000, in May of 2021, city council adopted an ordinance that limits the number of short stay rentals in Arcata. In doing so, they unintentionally took away this incentive. When this was discovered, city staff was apologetic and worked to remedy the situation with a new ordinance, the one before you tonight. Unfortunately, this topic has become bigger than city staff's attempt at protecting our original incentive package. The subject of affordable housing has entered the conversation and although a critical topic, it's not directly relevant to the Chapman House. Our vision for the property was to rehabilitate a beautiful and significant historic home to its former glory and create a property that the community could enjoy in a variety of different ways. We would not have approached the project the way we did without the flexibility, flexibilities granted to us by the city. We spent a lot of money on the renovation knowing that there could be market risk. What we didn't anticipate was the risk of losing an incentive that was awarded to us by city council. The investment in historic preservation is long term and incentives need to ride along with that investment regardless of who owns it into the future. We're thrilled that our preservation project has extended onto other surrounding properties. The house next to Chapman, Helen's house, now offers long term housing after being vacant for over 10 years. We believe that historic preservation sends a message not only to the community but to those who visit and that message is, we care. By approving the proposed ordinance, the city will be doing nothing more than honoring the deal it made with us when we agreed to rehabilitate the Chapman House. If the council rejects the ordinance, a chilling message will be sent to the historic preservation community and all citizens of Arcata that the city cannot be trusted to honor its commitments. We should all work together to ensure that Arcata preserves its history, maximizes its potential and treats everyone fairly. We ask for your support and vote in favor of this ordinance, thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and take public comment now as well.
Okay, our first our first commenter will be Vanessa and then after that we have Dennis. Go ahead Vanessa.
My name is Vanessa Griffin and I've had the pleasure of owning a business across from the Chapman House for the last five years. I've listened to craftspeople talk about how proud they are to work for people with such a commitment to the highest quality and what a delight it is to participate in restoring such a historic building. I've watched countless visitors and locals alike be excited to see the house come to life. I particularly love the copper flashing at sunset and nearly everyone that passes stops to admire both the landscaping and the house itself. I've had the honor of serving guests from out of town and those returning to the area. They're proud to show off a place where they went to school and celebrate graduations, weddings, countless huge events. Beautiful lodging for people out of the area and those returning to town, steps away from the best Arcata has to offer. It would seem beneficial that the Chapman House retain the incentives associated with landmark status, namely vacation rentals without limitation, it's a powerful incentive for me to work across the street, it's a beautiful building, so that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Next will be Dennis and then after that we have a call in. Go ahead, please Dennis, two minutes.
Hi, my name is Dennis Rial and I speak to you from a variety of hats. One, I'm the founder and one of the owners of Los Bagels. And I've been backed up to that property for 38 years and to see it slowly deteriorate as time went on and to see the condition that it's in now and what it's done to the historic part of the neighborhood is amazing. I also am a co-owner of Helen's House, a neighbor to the Chapman House and part of our incentive to redo that house and to bring it back to life, like Scott said, I'd been vacant for 10 years and to bring that back to life and have it be a long term rentals has been a joy and a pleasure having known Helen till she passed away at 103 in that house. But I think it is, it sends a message to the entire community, not just the business community but also our community as far as supporting the history that we do have. All that said aside, I understand the need for more and more housing and the crunch on the entire community. I've lived here for over 40 years and saw it slowly deteriorate and we need to do to work on that, but I think it's a separate issue. And I think it's really important for the city council, once a resolution is set up, that they don't go back and change that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next we have a phone caller in and after that will be Alex. Go ahead, phone caller. Can you unmute yourself?
Good evening, my name is Julie Bate Delcock and although I'm a member of the city of Arcata's planning commission, I am speaking as a lifelong citizen of Arcata. Regarding Chapman House and ordinance 1528, which was the original ordinance, I just want to point out that this ordinance was not only approved by the Historic Landmark Committee but also by the Planning Commission unanimously. Both committee and commission members agreed that the vacation stay use was just one of the quote, authorized principally permitted uses, end quote and consistent with the general plan. I would like to encourage you to approve ordinance 1548, allowing the Chapman House to maintain their vacation state status indefinitely, thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Alex. Go ahead, please Alex.
Alex Stillman, welcome or hello to you all. I just wanted to mention in the 1970s when I was elected to the council in 72, there was a lot of concern about the historic buildings in our community and many of them were being considered for demolition. So we thought it would be really important to create an ordinance that would allow people to use these buildings for commercial uses. So when you go up into North Town on the right hand side, you'll see many of them are office buildings or house offices, I should say, and you'll also see some of them are residential. We have some other offices that are dental on the bottom and residential on the top. We have quite a mix and I feel from the 1970s, then when we came up with that idea that we really saved our built environment, our historic environment. And the Arcata Chamber of Commerce at once when they had a walking map, they had a tour of all the different houses on and within a certain parameters of Arcata and I would see people out walking all the time for that. And so the Nixon House, which is across the street from the Chapman House, Dan and Donner House are considering or working right now on putting their house on the National Register of Historic Places. And then on the other side, I always called it the Davis House, the Helen Davis House is a chiropractic office and some new people have purchased that and they've been upgrading that building, especially the living on the second floor. So what Vanessa says about what has happened in the neighborhood, I feel like we've seen a resurgence. And that's what you always hope when you have a, an area and somebody comes in, it doesn't matter what the area is and they start to paint their house or do their landscaping, other people pick up on that. And the Chapman House did that for this neighborhood. And so I support you all supporting 1547, the ordinance, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would wish to comment on this item? Oh, we have Bill, go ahead, please Bill. Hi Bill, can you unmute yourself?
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I'm trying to get back to I'm trying to do this and read. Excuse me, I got, I got lost on a, trying to do two things on the computer.
No, when you're ready.
Yeah, I submitted, I submitted a letter as a, to the planning department, I think you all have it in your packet. And I didn't, I don't want to read the whole, I don't want to take time and read the whole letter. I just was trying to make a few points that, that I wish I could find them. Sorry, I just was in the process of, excuse me for blumbering here, but I really, basically I really want to support what city staff has put together and not only the staffer, I recommend. not only the staffer recommendation, but also the, the June Planning Commission Resolution, the PC twenty-one oh three, and I, I think that, you know, considering in May, the city count, this year, the city council adopted ordinance fifteen forty-five that limits short-stay rentals. I, I, I don't know, I really, being a major part of this project, I was invited into it, and I actually worked directly with city staff, and I worked with, I've worked with the National Park Service and the State Parks, this Office of Historic Preservation, and basically all the technical writing that went into these applications and, and and writing the historic story of the Chapman House, as well as helping to develop and negotiate all the planning that went into what we developed as far as the uses, which ultimately, even the Historic Landmarks nomination, I, I was involved in all of this. And so I'm, I'm very, my heart's very much into what we decided on, and I really think that it was done in, in good faith and very professionally, and I, and I, I personally think it, this is something where we should be careful about changing a policy that we set up to honor something that, that was so incredibly well done and such a really just, just a shining jewel in, in, in the Arcata palette. I mean, it's, it's one of the best preserved historic buildings in, in the city, and it will, it'll maintain that because it's been allowed to have some incentives that, that really will, will help, help to afford this into the future. Thank you, Bill. Thank you. That's our two-minute timer for each speaker. Okay, okay. Um, all right.
I'm not seeing any other commenters.
All right, that will bring it back to the council. How about Councilmember Schaefer? You don't have to go first, I'll pick somebody else.
I don't want to go first. I feel like I always go first, no. No, I can go first. I, I've actually, like, my notes are like a pros and cons list. I've like written, I was like, well, if this, then this argument goes this way, and then, you know, it's kind of just a difficult one, because, yes, this is, you know, the historical preservation that gives these entitlements has been something that has been in place for, in our community for a long time. And I respect that as a person that majored in history at college, is a history teacher and a lover of local history and all of that, I can appreciate the beautiful work that has been done. I also only live two blocks away from the Chapman House, so I get to, I had got to see the progress and get to enjoy walking by a beautiful place pretty much every day. But also, you know, when this historical preservation ordinance, you know, as I think Alex Stillman said, yeah, it was, it was into conception back in the seventies, and Airbnb didn't exist in the seventies, and kind of the strain that we see a lot of Airbnb is putting on local towns and taking away from some housing stock, but also, I mean, we, we talk about affordable housing, but also, I mean, housing for families and housing for professionals that want to move to our community. I mean, in, in my conversations that I had with the Hunts, I mean, also being able to see some sort, there's like, you know, you have long-term rental, you have short-term rental, and then there's like the short, long-term rental. I mean, being able to attract doctors, traveling nurses, a lot of traveling medical professionals that come up here to be able to have, you know, available housing, housing stock for them as well, not just through, you know, Airbnb. But, you know, obviously, I really respect the, the reports and the opinions of both the Planning Commission and the Historical Landmark Committee. And, and also, you know, just seeing where we are currently with this ordinance, we're not really anywhere near reaching a cap as well. So even if this ordinance didn't go through tonight, I mean, I think it would be very easy for new owners to be able to operate this as an Airbnb and be safely within the cap, you know, and, and have that. And so, you know, I'm kind of sitting in a place where I, I really, you know, want to, want to straddle the line here and kind of, you know, figure out what the compromise is, rather than just saying, in perpetuity, we are going to basically let this be a three-bedroom hotel, which thus kind of does change the zoning of, of, of the property. It's not really residential anymore, it's become a business. And, you know, operating it as a, a three-bedroom hotel, basically. And so, you know, where I kind of feel comfortable right now, and I would love to, obviously, you know, I went first, so I'm the one talking a lot right now, but to, you know, hear where everybody else stands. And perhaps, you know, we received some public comment that suggested that there could be perhaps a sunset date on this ordinance, and, you know, granting, maybe not forever, that they could be a short-term rental, but, you know, for up to ten years to recoup on those, you know, costs for this historical renovation and reconstruction of this beautiful home. And I think, you know, how, operating it for ten years as a, as a three-bedroom hotel, basically, I mean, could recoup a lot of that investment that was put in. So, yeah, I'll say that for now, and hear what everybody else has to say.
Great. Councilmember Akinsalzar.
So, I think, based on our prior agreements with them and the recommendations of both the committees that weighed in, I'm, I'm leaning towards supporting, supporting the ordinance that's put before us. I know we, we do have a housing crisis, and I'm in weekly housing meetings discussing those. But there's also, you know, when you look, I think one of the things that really kind of pushed me over the, the deciding line was when you look at the other uses that it can have, like, you know, we could, we could say it can't, you know, we could take away the, the, the opportunity to be a vacation rental in the future, but it could be a restaurant, a retail store, lots of other things. It doesn't, you know, us saying it can't, you know, not granting them that it could be a vacation rental, doesn't mean it'll turn into housing. So that's not necessarily the case. So just kind of looking at the overall picture of the things that it still could be in order to, you know, with our past agreements for them. I, I mean, I think there are times that we do need to go back and change things. There are definitely times that past ordinances need to be changed, and I, I just don't think that this is one of those times. So, you know, I don't, I want to, I think that we should honor our agreement with the Hunt family.
Great. Councilmember Goldstein.
Um, yeah, I think that, I mean, I think it's really important to remember, we're not deciding tonight whether this property can or cannot be a vacation rental. And so, as Councilmember Schaefer pointed out, we still have plenty of availability, as far as I'm aware, within our cap that we put on short-stay rentals. And so, um, I think that, I, I mean, I'm really proud of that short-stay or rental ordinance that we worked on. I think that, you know, it, it was a really important step, and I'm just not sure I'm comfortable giving an exception, even if it was a previously talked about exception, because I do think that I don't want to open up the door for more exceptions or more arguments for others to come forward and say, well, what about my property? What about my property? Because I do think that that ordinance that we passed back in May is a really important step for Arcata and our housing crisis. I think that I would have different feelings if it was that they couldn't rent at all as a, a short-stay rental, but knowing that we have available permits within our cap, I, I think that it still absolutely can be an Airbnb or any of the other many uses that you all have talked about. And so, so, yeah, I mean, I completely understand, you know, both sides and where you're coming from, but to me, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with starting to make exceptions to that really important ordinance.
Thank you. Councilmember Matthews.
Hi, first of all, I just would like to thank everybody for presenting such compelling facts behind this. The property itself is beautiful, and, you know, I've done a lot of thinking about this ordinance, and especially since this is going to be my first big decision. But I definitely feel like just from the amount of historic work that was put into this property, along with the prior agreements that we've had, looking at that block and seeing how it kind of spurred kind of rebirth of that street, and I am inclined to say yes to, to approving this ordinance.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know. I kind of, I see it from both sides. And I feel like trying to find some kind of compromise, I mean, I would go along with Councilmember Schaefer's suggestion of doing a sunset date. So, again, there's still a lot of permits to be had. Now, a sunset date, I mean, my understanding is what's really going on here is that, which I guess what hasn't been mentioned, is that the property is being sold. And the new owners will only buy it if they can operate as an Airbnb, and they're concerned about the permitting. So, I mean, I feel like if we give a ten-year sunset date, I feel like that's a, a fair amount of time for a new owner to purchase the property and have it and consider whether or not they want to keep it. And again, it's, it's very likely that there will still be available permits as well. So those are my thoughts on it.
Yeah, I do like the idea of a ten-year sunset date. I think that is completely reasonable.
Okay.
I'm also much more comfortable moving forward with the idea of a sunset date. I think it is a fair compromise.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, can I make a motion?
Yes, you can.
Okay, I move, I move that we approve ordinance number fifteen forty-seven, an ordinance of the city council, amending the Chapman House Historic Landmark Ordinance, waiving of the text with a ten-year sunset date from adoption of the ordinance.
Can I, can I interject?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, I, I think the way, you may want to amend the language inside the ordinance, because as I understood, what you just said is that you want to actually allow the exemption from the cap for a period of ten years. You don't want to completely eliminate the landmark ordinance in ten years. Is that correct? Yes.
Yeah, I want to do what, yeah, you said.
Can you, do you want to pull up the ordinance, Stephen?
Yeah.
And then also as a reminder, Councilmember Schaefer, you would be introducing the ordinance tonight, and adoption will come on the consent calendar at a, a future meeting.
Yeah, well, and that's, I guess, just a clarification question too. I mean, yeah, so the ten years would be from date of adoption, which I think is what I kind of meant to say, but tripped over my words a little bit, but, yeah.
Or date of effective date.
Or is it from data, or is it from this date, you know, is the ten years from this date, or is it from the date of adoption, once we adopted via consent?
It's whatever you want it to be.
Okay, yeah.
Because you're setting the, the sunset, so you, you can make it ten years from wherever you want it.
Okay, so you got to help me out here, folks.
Yeah, so what I, I guess what I would suggest is, in this bullet number one, it reads, vacation rental, up to three units may be operated as vacation rentals. The units shall be exempt from the permit cap for a, for a period of ten years, expiring, and then insert date, but shall be subject to all of the permit requirements and regulations established by municipal code, et cetera, et cetera. So if you want it to be ten years from-
I move, move for that. I mean, I, I think, in, in the sense, I mean, we can discuss this too, but, I mean, I think ten years from when it is, when we adopt this would make the most sense.
Okay, so, August eighteenth, twenty thirty-one.
No, it's, it's being introduced on August eighteen.
So it'd be either September first, twenty thirty-one, or October first, twenty thirty-one, if you want it from the date of, of it going into effect. Vice Mayor Akinsalazar also has her hand up.
Um, no, mine is actually, for, we can finish up this process, because mine's just going to muddy the waters a little bit more.
So, I'm sorry, I missed whether you wanted it from the date of, the effective date or the adoption date. And it's a difference of thirty days or sixty days either way, so it's probably de minimis in the owners' minds. Let's see what it ever gives them more time. Okay, so that would be October first, twenty thirty-one.
Okay.
Twenty thirty-one sounds like a long way away.
Yeah. I mean, okay, and so then, in, in that case, I mean, that, that sounds all good. I, I agree with that. That's the motion I want to make. So, what? Do I repeat it? Do I attempt to repeat it? What should I say? I don't, sorry, guys.
How about if I read it back to you, and if it sounds acceptable, you can say, as, as amended?
Okay.
So, vacation rental, up to three units may be operated as a vacation rentals. The units shall be exempt from the permit cap for a period of ten years until October one, twenty thirty-one. And so your introduction would read, introduce ordinance number fifteen forty-seven, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Arcata, amending the Chapman House Landmark Ordinance, waiving the text and consent to read by title only as amended.
Okay. Great, and, yeah, I, I like, I like the date, as amended, sounds good, and then, yeah, so I move that we introduce ordinance number fifteen forty-seven, ordinance of the city council of the City of Arcata, amending the Chapman House Landmark Ordinance, waiving of the text, consent to read by title only as amended.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion in a second. Councilmember Akinsalzar.
Um, I think my point is probably moot by now. I was, I was going to,
Did you have more comments? I'm sorry.
No, no, no. I mean, I just, just by listening to what everybody said, I, I think I'm outvoted here, but I was going to make a motion to introduce the ordinance as is, but I, just from what everybody has said, I don't think that it's that's going to go through, so, oh, I'm fine.
Okay. How, how do you vote?
Um, I, I would like to, I want, I think that they, we should introduce the ordinance as is, though I'm going to vote no.
Okay. Councilmember Matthews. Oh, you're muted.
Sorry, I'm nervous. I'm voting for the amended.
Okay.
So, yes.
Okay. Councilmember Goldstein.
Hi.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Hi.
My vote, I. All right, yeah, we had differing opinions on this. I'm glad we were able to find a compromise that most of us are happy with. Thank you. Yeah, thank you, staff. Thanks, David.
And I, just to, to add in, I think that a compromise is better than straight-up no, so that's better.
Um, let's see what we have. So next, it looks like we have, receive an update and provide direction on potential dog park sites. And please have a staff report from Environmental Services Director Singapore.
Great. Well, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Thanks for the opportunity to provide an update on potential dog park locations within the city. It's recommended that the council receive a brief presentation, as well as comments from members of the Arcata Dog Park Working Group, one of which is here tonight, except public comment and then direct staff as necessary. So hopefully you can see a screen here. Great, well, exploring the location for a dog park in Arcata has long history, and, you know, I think a key thing is that off-leash dog areas are becoming much more popular and really a common asset in many communities. Here in Humboldt County, both Eureka and Fortuna and McKinleville have designated off-leash dog parks, and they're really providing an important amenity for many community members. They really can also reduce the impact of off-leash dogs on trails and in other public grounds. It can be a poor important asset for residents that may not have a backyard for their dog to run. And it also can be a economic driver and visitor-serving facility as families these days are often really traveling with dogs. Great. So for history and just kind of current status, here in the city, we have nearly forty miles trails in the community forest and the marsh and the Humboldt Bay Trail and thirty neighborhood and community parks. All of more places that dogs are allowed on leash. But in the twenty ten Arcata Parks and Recreation Facilities Plan, was really identified that an off-leash dog area was a top facility need. So the Public Works Department then and now the Environmental Services Department studied the potential for creating a dog park leash-free area with the assistance of a community group that formed the Arcata Dog Park Working Group. And then in the years twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, the city had an identified goal to identify potential sites for a dog park within existing city facilities. In twenty fifteen, the Dog Park Working Group put together a presentation with city staff to the city council outlining the goals and benefits of a potential off-leash area as well as really thorough analysis of pros and cons of potential locations. So key criteria were really identified by the working group and by city staff for a successful dog park sighting and maintenance. The working group conducted a lot of outreach to community members and businesses and raised support for the project and really looked at a number of locations, which I'll touch on briefly in in a minute. And then council then in twenty fifteen provided a direction to really pursue a dog park planning at the Little Lakes property on South I Street. So I just wanted to touch on some of the key criteria that have been discussed. And the first really being that a dog park could augment existing city facilities or really fit in with the adjoining neighborhood. Noise can certainly be a concern. And so guidance is often, if possible, to locate outside of a residential neighborhood or if co-located and a post potential times of use. So dog parks come in many sizes and they can be really small from five hundred square feet to over ten acres. But ideally, about three acres minimum and potential for separate areas for small dogs and and bigger dogs. But there could be here an opportunity for more of an interim or a phased approach and looking at one to two acres to begin with. Another key consideration is happy fencing. Four to six feet kind of has been some of the research, you know, that that we have that we have done and planning for that and thinking about how that may impact other, you know, kind of visual amenities in the area. But that's both a safety, safety need as well as an amenity. Another is for really accessibility and clear sightlines of having a site that is mostly flat for both access for dogs and humans across the property and really kind of observation and for dog owners to do their own work of of dog maintenance and picking up dog poop and other things. Um, another key component that the working group really identified was for the park to be centrally located, easy to find, clear directional signage. Another being parking nearby and definitely ADA accessible parking. And then some key park amenities that you would often find within a park, but that would be specific for a dog park as well, doggy pot stations, benches, water fountain, those amenities as well. So previously, you know, both city staff and the working group had looked at potential locations, again, the Little Lakes property, the Mount Trashmore within the Arcata Martian Wildlife Sanctuary, a location at Ennis Park, an area near the Arcata Community Center, Shea Park, Sunny Bray Park, Valley West Park and D Street Linear Park. Another goal was to really consider the potential for having a dog park location above the north and sou- southern Arcata. And after looking at pros and cons of those particular sites, council really provided direction at the time to explore the Little Lakes property. It is accessible from downtown, just down I Street, and really is at the entrance to the Arcata Marsh, so it could really enhance that current public facility and connect to trails within the marsh. It's also a larger open area, flat area for sightlines and flexibility in designing park amenities. And so this site is the site of the former Little Lakes Industries Mill and there has been there's no contamination. The city's been progressing towards cleanup of the site. The Community Development Department has been leading efforts to characterize and remediate the site. The city received an EPA grant to perform a brownfields assessment and the first step of that was really really to characterize contamination on site and work towards developing a cleanup plan to plan for future beneficial uses. That grant is nearly complete and has a draft site cleanup plan developed. And the city also submitted to the EPA a cleanup grant that was not immediately successful, though the city is currently preparing to resubmit to that funding source. Also, additional testing is currently underway to determine if it may be possible if a section of the property may be able to be cleared in advance of the contamination being cleaned up in other areas of the property. So that could still be explored. And, you know, this while planning had progressed for a dog park at this location, you know, any future potential for locating off-leash area here would need to plan along with any other potential uses for other sections of Little Lakes property and exploring a change in zoning and a coastal development permit, but this, you know, all could be achievable. And and so again, during, as I've mentioned during that, the time of twenty fifteen upwards towards the end of twenty eighteen, their Kida Dog Park Group had submitted potential designs for the site and city staff had looked at opportunities of phasing a dog park in at specific areas on the property. And so I did want to, just because this was looking at an update of potential dog park sites, also to look at some of the locations that were previously explored and maybe some other potential locations the city had not looked at much in the past. And and many of these are perhaps a smaller location that could serve in an interim capacity until such time as environmental cleanup occurs on Little Lakes. But I will really say that no additional community outreach has yet occurred about these additional proposed locations. So this is just an update and staff will be looking for further direction. And so one location that many we might, many of us might drive or walk by and not notice is an area of Caltrans right-of-way relinquishment. That is along Seventh Street and just south of City Hall. It's downtown. It's already fenced. It would need a gate to access from Seventh Street from the public right-of-way. It is a very small location. ADA public parking may not be as or would need to really be explored. But this is a, you know, a potential small location close to downtown. And another is is Fourteenth and Union. It's adjacent to the entrance to Redwood Park. It is part of Redwood Park, though, you know, a separate maintained area. Parking may be limited as it's directly adjacent to H S U. There is no fencing and adding fencing would certainly change the aesthetics of the entrance, you know, to this. You know, really a beautiful park entrance and and no outreach has yet been done with neighbors, but is accessible and walkable from H S U and and existing park facilities. And this location, the Seventh and Union, is just a part of the Arcata Community Center and Sports Complex. It is, you know, between what we think of as the community center and Seventh Street. It is along a hillside. It's a larger open space. It could really be contiguous with the sports complex and community center. But it is steep, especially reached from the community center in the bottom. And that may be more difficult for members or community members with mobility issues to access areas of the park. But is is an open space to potentially consider, and this was one of the locations previously considered. Another location previously considered was the southern part of D Street Linear Park in between D Street and one oh one. It has a long orientation for dogs to run. It is partially fenced along the Caltrans one oh one right-of-way. And street parking is limited. It is very walkable from downtown. And because of kind of many of these characteristics, in twenty seventeen, the city invited neighbors to attend the Parks and Recreation Committee meeting at the D Street Community Center to provide thoughts on this proposed location, and neighbors were less supportive at that time of this location being considered. Another location that was not previously explored a lot was Stewart Park. It's located in central, you know, north Arcata. Some fencing already exists on the east and south boundaries. It serves multiple park users, has a busy playground, big open area. And but again, no outreach has yet been conducted in neighborhoods adjacent. And Valley West Park is another location that was previously explored. It's very accessible from Valley West neighborhoods and also visitor-serving hotels. It could provide a northern Arcata Dog Park location. This location is wet in the winter and that would pose maybe one of the greatest challenges. It's also directly adjacent to the current site of the Laurel Tree Charter School that does utilize this park. But perhaps there could be separate areas for or just different hours of use. Great. So for development of a dog park in, you know, and looking at costs for a very small space that may be already set up with fencing, you know, I think our costs would be would be more minimal. And just in our research, it was really looking at probably development costs being at the very minimum about twenty five thousand upwards towards a hundred thousand per acre to develop some of those key development things being fencing, as I talked about, some of those key park amenities, ADA accessibility, and then planning for maintenance of the ground. And just whether that's a substrate, how we're, you know, how we would plan for the use of that park ground space. And then for maintenance, you know, with any new park or new facility, there are always additional maintenance costs. And we really would seek collaborative partnerships with community groups and local businesses and the Arcata Dog Park working group has has very much offered this assistance in both development and and maintenance. So really, we could look at developing agreements to assist with maintenance more in the long term. But likely, maybe additional maintenance costs per year could be upwards of fifteen thousand per year and would need to be planned for and and budgeted. And I did, just since we're talking about parks, I did just want to bring up what some of our current part priorities are in our fiscal year twenty one, twenty two goals and and budget. And so we have many parks and beautification goals right now. Our kind of first two on the list are for Shea Park and Redwood Park undergoing larger upgrades. And so those are exciting projects and also Carlson Park in Northern Valley West. We're really focused on grant seeking for river access and playground in the Valley West area. Larson Park will be undergoing resurfacing of tennis courts and pickleball courts next month. We're working on invasives removal with the neighborhood at Sunny Bray Park. And then beautification priorities being within Valley West, H S U corridor and and H Street. So just of a focus on what our our current part priorities have been this this year. So for next steps, you know, would love to or would recommend that the council hear comments from a member of their Kida Dog Park Working Group here tonight, and that is Lynette Chin. And receive comments from members of the public and then really provide further direction to the department of whether to further support a dog park sighting at the identified location of Little Lakes and or continue to examine other potential dog park locations through community outreach and research. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Emily. So did I understand it was now are the dog park people gonna talk? Is that what I heard?
Yes, I was recommending that you next hear from Lynette Chen.
There's Lynette. Cool. Excellent. Go ahead, Lynette.
Hi, so I I have a couple of comments. One is that was a super thorough job of reviewing in a very concise way the last ten years of trying to get a dog park at the city of Arcata. And I would also like to say, the one thing that I didn't hear was what what we were really pushing for the Arcata Dog Park Working Group was a regional scale dog park. So we have no quarrel with the neighborhood dog park. D Street Linear Park, the the little one just south of City Hall, that sounds fine for a neighborhood dog park. But what we're what we were really hoping for was a regional scale, multiple acre, the kind of dog park that attracts dog tourism, of which there is a fair amount. And so so that's the one of the major factors that I think led the city council to identify the Little Lake Industries property as the best of the bunch. If anybody has any any questions about any of those sites, like, I'm happy to answer questions if anybody has any.
All right. Do we have any members of the public that would like to comment?
We do, mayor. We have at least a couple at this point. Our first speaker will be Alex and then we have a call in caller for next. Go ahead, please, Alex.
Uh, thank you. You know, when I was in New Orleans a number of years ago with a friend of mine, every day we would take her dog to a park that really looked just like what we have across from City Hall and Safeway parking lot. And it was long and narrow like that. It had a bench at the end. And I've always thought that that would be a good starting place for Arcata since it's completely fenced in. It has a sort of a hill and there's some areas to romp around if you're a dog. And and then they had a bench and they also had a place where you picked up your bag in order to pick up your dog's poop. So I would say that would be a good starting point, and I understand wanting to have something larger, but in the interim, there's been a need for something smaller for a long time. Or I should say a dog park for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a phone caller, call in user two is the screen name. Please go ahead. Can you unmute?
Good evening, council. This is Oz of Arcata. I've had, over the years, four service dogs in the downtown area. We have long experience with the dog problem. You might say years ago, the plaza hood went to the dogs. And it's a public safety problem for years and it's been a really public health problem downtown. It's probably one of the most pervasive problems the plaza's had. If you want to clean downtown, you've got to have a safe place for dogs to get out of their car and walk from the plaza close by to relieve the dog pressure. Now, Harmony Patrol report for your information. I take my dog out. I'll take a fifty-five minute walk around three blocks around the plaza. And in less than an hour, there's forty different animals walking in the downtown. They're too close, too many, and it's congested. And relief there would help the public safety, would give an officer a pedestrian assist instead of a ticket for no place and the plaza's the only place. It's it's just not acceptable. So from a public safety point of view, get us a bark park. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Oz.
Is there anyone else attending that would like to comment on this item? No further public comment on this item, mayor.
Great. All right, we'll bring it to the council. Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
I have a couple questions probably for either Emily or David, whoever has the the knowledge about it. One is just, I guess, the bigger question is about Little Lakes and the actual timeframe that it would be usable because I've been in several group settings where Little Lakes has come up for possible housing for homeless people. And it's my understanding that it's been made to seem like that is just far out of reach and something way down the line. So I guess, you know, I wanted to find out what what really is the availability, like when would that park be usable? And then if it is usable, I think we should really consider how, you know, how we're going to use it. And if, you know, it is, it sounds like an ideal place for a dog park, but it also sounds like it's been brought up in several different places as an ideal place for safe parking and camping. So is there room for both of those on there? Or, you know, when is that going to be available? So that's kind of the bigger question. And then another question I have would just be regarding the possibility of Valley West. You know, we do want to provide some more positive activities out there. What I don't know how much space we have at Carlson Park, but is that seems like an appropriate place to have a dog park, but perhaps there's not enough room there.
I may look to Director Loya for your first question on status of Little Lakes project as community development is leading that effort and then can help address other questions.
Yeah, the Little Lakes is, this may be new information for for the new council members. I'm not sure how closely you tracked our our former redevelopment dissolution. But the city used to have a redevelopment agency. And one of the roles of the redevelopment agency was economic development. One of the ways that it conducted economic development was by purchasing properties, clearing the, you know, constraints, and then turning them over to the private industry to do economic development activities. Little Lakes and Happy Valley were two properties that the redevelopment agency had acquired. It's a separate legal agency entity from the city of Arcata had acquired prior to dissolution. And then in 2012, when the state said, no more redevelopment agencies, you have to unwind these. There were certain requirements that were placed on those properties. One of the requirements is that they had to be used for the purposes that they were required for. And if they aren't used for those purposes, then the city basically has to pay for that asset to the other taxing entities. And so if we convert it wholesale, and I just kind of wanted to reflect back on one of the images that you saw where there was a, you know, the basically the entire T of Little Lakes was turned into a dog park, which would be, in no uncertain terms, a an amazing dog park. But it would be completely inconsistent with the the terms of the redevelopment agency's acquisition of that property. And so we would then have to basically come up with, you know, approximately a million dollars. We'd have to get it appraised and find out the exact number, but I'm going to guess a million dollars to then pay to the taxing entities so that we could then turn it over to a dog park. So we'd lose both the asset and the money in some respects. And so we're kind of in the middle of that process. I do think that a smaller dog park could be consistent with the earlier designs that were, you know, the conceptual designs that were were made for the Little Lake properties. Because there were some, you know, some park amenities that were pretty linear and kind of focused around the edges. But but long story short, we're not completely through that process yet and don't have complete access to, you know, to to engage in those uses. And I would love to just, you know, sort of a staff report at a council meeting coming up, be able to bring that and sort of, you know, go go through it in more detail, kind of bring the the properties to to even show you what we've done in the past, what the current planning documents are for those, and kind of move that process forward. So that we're still kind of towards the middle ladder stages of being able to use that property is the the short answer.
So do you have an idea of a guesstimate of how many years away we are for us to use it for whatever we choose to use it for?
Well, again, the the uses are restricted. They, we have a plan for the property, and it's largely focused on economic development activities because that's what the agency acquired it for. And so we we don't have just complete free use of it if we use it for another use besides what it was planned for. With the Department of Finance said, yes, you can retain that asset and do this plan. Anything else we do, we would have to, you know, basically pay for the property to retain it for another purpose. So and and again, we can get into the details and that in a separate item. And I would say that, you know, because of COVID, I mean, frankly, I would have liked to have had this completed last year. I had, you know, kind of spooled up energies and was, you know, making plans. We we had it in the budget two years ago to work on that. And because of COVID, I've really been working on other things right now than than the agency dissolution. So, you know, I don't want to overpromise. What I can tell you is that it's not currently in the budget to do a whole lot of work on that property. You know, the, you know, we're going to kind of kind of continue to try and move the ball forward, but that's not in the current budget. We have other things that we're focused on right now. It's not to say that the council couldn't redirect me and say, hey, we're going to add that to the budget and take some other things off the plate. But we can have that conversation as well.
And then what about just the the possibility of Carlson Park? Is that just too small or not ideal of it there?
Yeah, a portion of Carlson Park had previously really been been looked at at a potential location. And for a number of the access reasons and size did not, size of open open space for sightlines did not rise to the top, as well as kind of hearing from the community of looking for more public gathering spaces and playground and access for families. That we really had received direction to pursue grants for passive river access, as well as the active playground multi-use court development that are two current grant fund-seeking grants have been pursuing. And so that was Carlson Park was looked at, and other priorities for that location had risen to the top.
Okay, thank you.
Right, Councilmember Matthews.
I like that idea of that D Street Linear Park. Emily, we need to, so what's the next step as far as some of these other places in particular, like the Valley West Park? And the D Street Linear Park just is the next step getting community outreach on that and talking to the people in the those neighborhoods?
Yes, certainly. If the council provides direction for pursuing some of these other proposed locations that really have really, many of those just been proposed by staff. A next step would be getting thorough neighborhood and greater community input and also working with the Dog Park Working Group and their their network for that as well. And and our department would be happy to to work on that. We have been given, you know, direction in this fiscal year of focusing on some of these key park updates that I had had identified. And and so that that outreach can certainly occur as a next step with council direction.
The D Street one, is that the one that's already fenced?
The the D Street location has fencing along the one side, the the west, the west side. And there has been community or neighborhood outreach in 2017. Letters were sent to all nearby property owners and residents. And and community members provided feedback at the Parks and Rec Committee. And I would say that there was a lot of concern of parking and noise since that really is a residential location. And so we would certainly want to make sure that any, you know, any sighting we can work with neighbors to make that be appropriate. And so additional outreach could occur.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Goldstein.
I have a couple thoughts. I have one question. I know I was, what am I trying to say? I'm wondering if ticks have been, like, if there's any info on ticks at the different parks. I know with like the marsh, I have a very small, very fluffy dog. And at a certain time of year, I can't walk her at the marsh because when we get home, she has like literally 20 ticks on her. And so if there was a dog park next to the marsh, I probably wouldn't take my dog there most of the year or like during that time of year, I should say. So I was just wondering if there's been like any research on which parks have the least, like, population of ticks or what, like preventative measures could be taken?
Yeah, that's a good question. I do not have that kind of research in in front of me. But thinking of the, you know, the habitat that ticks are often in are often longer grass, more vegetation, and type of, you know, environment that you may get in a more natural area like the marsh versus a a public area that is maintained for more like a like a park. And so I think a lot of the kind of maintenance and planning of the substrate for the dog park would be a key component of that and really looking at not having long grass or perhaps not grass at all and using some other substrate. And I think that there would therefore be less habitat for for ticks to propagate.
Awesome. Thank you. And then I appreciate the point that Councilmember or Vice Mayor Atkins Salazar brought up, just that while we do really love our dogs, I really love my dog. She's my whole world. We don't want to be taking any potential housing sites away. And so just, I think, for me, just being mindful of that as we are talking about parks. And so I am more inclined to some of the already set locations that are already existing parks that they're going to stay as parks, whether they're a dog park or not. I I, my one hesitation, because I do also like the the D Street Linear Park idea, was just that it is next to the 101 and my, I know my dog, again, this is all anecdotal, right? But my dog's a big jumper. She like can hop really, really high. It's kind of alarming. And so I would just feel I a little nervous having dogs right next to, like, the only fast-moving street in Arcata, basically. That would be my only hesitation because I do think it's actually a really good location. I really liked the Stewart Park location as well. And then also, I know it was brought up about putting it in Valley West and having, you know, something nice and positive for the community in Valley West, which I think is really wonderful. But I would encourage conversation with groups like Kuna and other representatives that live in that community and represent the community to say like, hey, we want this, or hey, this is not actually what we want as like a service in our community. And but I, I mean, I, as somebody who does not live in Valley West, would say, hey, I think that's a great idea. But I don't, as I said, I don't live there. And so I would just encourage more conversation. But overall, I really appreciate the super thorough report. And yeah, those are my thoughts right now.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Yeah, I'll keep it brief just because mostly I agree with everything that has really already been said. I mean, obviously, you know, the Little Lakes location stands out as probably the best. But I am also hesitant just because of, you know, the kind of the uses that Director Loya described and also just the the fact that, yeah, we have looked at that as a possible location for housing. And, you know, in in that corridor, it does kind of make sense for possible use for that. But continuing, I mean, the exploration of that, I I think is, you know, acceptable. But if we're, yeah, ending up having to, you know, pay because we're going to use a different use, then that just kind of sounds like it's all snowballing at that point. But I mean, as far as other locations and actually, you know, places, I have my own own list of places I I take my dogs that probably aren't dog parks, but are acceptable. But the Stewart Park, I mean, that field there, I think, you know, obviously you need neighborhood and community input. But it's a good example of, you know, pretty open line of sight, definitely enough space for that idea of kind of creation of a community park. I also kind of agree with Councilmember Goldstein that I I'm a little wary of both of the, both the D Street Linear and the one that's by City Hall there as just kind of being too close to the highway. Though, yeah, there is is a fence. I mean, things happen, dogs dig, dogs jump, people cut fences to get places, you know, and there could be holes without even our knowledge. That could, you know, and especially, I mean, those corridors there, too, there's a lot of people that travel and go under the overpasses and cut fences. And I I've, you know, seen disrepair in those areas, too. So it might just not be the safest, in my opinion. But if we're just talking about, I guess, locations that we'd like to see maybe more outreach about or that could be, you know, good potential spots, I think the the Stewart Park location. And also the the entrance to Rowan Park there, the 14th and Union. And I will say that I just, you know, I take my dog to the Hiller Park Dog Park all the time. And one of the big draws, too, is having even, there's a pretty small network of of trails that are off-leash use. And even, you know, and this could be down the line, but possibility of expanding some of those front trails in Rowan Park, that could maybe be some off-leash trails as well, just because I don't like to sit when I go to the dog park. I like to circle around and walk, too. So, yeah, that's kind of my input. I think Stewart sounds good. I think Fortive and Union. But also exploring the Little Lakes location more could be beneficial, but I don't want to take away, you know, available land for essential housing stock that we need, so.
All right. Yeah, go ahead, Stacy. You're muted.
Sorry, I wanted to kind of ask a question of Lynette since she's here joining us and representing the group. You know, it's my understanding that that Little Lakes, you know, was what the group has their heart set on. But I guess my my question is, does it seem, does it still seem reasonable to to have that as a potential site, given that we're looking at still, you know, looks to be several more years before it would be usable? And, you know, the possibility of it costing a million dollars just to transfer it into use? It just seems very expensive and and time-consuming. So that's kind of what I wanted your opinion on for that.
So a couple things. One is, there was no occasion when we thought that we were going to get all 11 or 12 acres of the Little Lake Industries site. Our biggest ask was for seven acres of that site. Although the conceptual drawing, you know, somebody came up with, you know, on the, basically on the back of an envelope. So so we, you know, we don't intend to 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 take all the site. I think that I I don't know the extent to which the property has to be used for the site that it was originally designed for or for the idea that it was originally designed for, which is economic development. But it seems to me, you know, we could leave the upland portion of the site, the dry portion of the site or the more dry portion of the site for economic development. A lot of the area there is low-lying enough that it's not a sensible area to invest in long-term housing. It might be sensible for short-term housing, but it's not a sensible place for long-term housing because, you know, if you look at flood maps taking into account global warming, it's underwater in the long term. And so people are not going to want to put in major economic development that is long-term. Short-term, yes. So that, in fact, was one of the things that made it attractive as a dog park because so much less infrastructure would have to go there. So I don't know, like I said, if we're only using, say, 50% of the property for a dog park, whether, you know, I don't know how the law works about how much we would have to pay in compensation under those circumstances. That's a David Loya question.
Do you, do you have an answer, David? Is it possible to do partial?
Yeah, yeah. And I could be really brief. I actually quickly found an image of the some of the concept work. And so I I just want to be clear. I agree with Lynette, you know, I don't think any, the conversations have not been to use the entire site. That was just reflected in the drawing. But this is kind of a conceptual site plan for Little Lakes. And you could see that there are several areas that had that were identified as sort of expansion of the Marsh Enhancement Zone and Jolly Giant Creek. And we we have some updated, more detailed conceptual drawings that have actually this outside edge as linear park and including this area here. And and again, I want to be real clear, isn't that just these areas that are identified on this conceptual map? Um, and and again, I I want to be real clear, isn't that just these areas that are identified on this conceptual map uh, could be used as a dog park? But that there was always a concept, concept that there would be some sort of park amenities here. And so I think turning it into a dog park as a park amenity would be a completely reasonable use of the site. Um, and so, uh, and and again, the, you know, the the site is, you know, at this point, you know, nearing its sort of contamination completion. So I think we're on the the middle ladder end of being able to uh, to work with the site. If we, if we dedicated a portion of the site to dog park and not the whole thing, we wouldn't be in a situation where we'd be paying for for that site. This is essentially what the the Department of Finance approved. So I wanted to be real clear on that. Um, and then uh, the other thing that I wanted to mention was that, um, you know, at this point, the the planning for that particular site hasn't really included uh, housing. Largely due to our um, you know, adaptation planning, not wanting to put more people in an area that, uh, you know, would 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 feel the impacts of climate change of sea level rise first. And so that's really an economic asset that we're talking about there. So I hope that clears up some of the confusion that I promptly introduced earlier.
Um, it does, it does for me. I mean, I guess, ha, you know, and I know we were never thinking about permanent housing there, but it was the idea of possible like a a camping space. But um, so I guess my opinion is that we do need to move forward. That, you know, people have been working for this dog park for a very, very long time for something that's pretty um, pretty simple to make happen, you know? Um, in, it doesn't seem to be that complicated. So I would like to push forward with it. And, you know, i- if staff thinks that we can reasonably use a portion of Little Lakes. And that makes the, you know, the people wanting the dog park happy, and it's not going to be overly um, expensive or time consuming for them to wait for. Then I I'm in favor of that. Um, I think if we can use that property, it would be great. I just want to be realistic with our our timeframes and finances.
Um, what was the, what was the uh, predicted timeframe again? Or did you have a, any predictions, David? I'm sorry if I missed it.
Yeah, at this point, I don't have a timeframe. It's not this current fiscal year's budget to work on that. Um, I am continuing to push that work forward. Um, uh, but but, you know, some of the heavy lifting is going to have to probably wait until next fiscal year.
Okay.
I mean, I'll just be perfectly frank, all of the, you know, the work that my department's doing with COVID is, you know, and. You know, the managing the the uh, CD money and et cetera is, it's keeping us pretty busy right now. Yeah.
Um. Yeah, I mean, I feel, I guess, when I was going uh, door to door a couple of years ago. Um, I was amazed by how many people in our city have dogs. And uh, I would say like, easily like eighty percent of the doors I knocked on, people had dogs. And um, the dog park was, you know, really sought, really sought after um, addition to the community. And um, we've been talking about it for a long time. Um, and, you know, it does seem like it would be, it shouldn't be that hard, I guess, to designate an area as a dog park. And and give something to the community, at least to start with, um, or maybe even two sites. So, I mean, I'd like to see us, uh, you know, and I understand it's not in this this year's um, budget. Um, but uh, if we do um, identify some some extra funds, then um, which I think maybe maybe we can. Uh, I'd like us to identify, you know, a site or two that we agree on and direct the staff to, you know, if it's wherever the first steps are, if that's engaged with the community in those areas. Um, cost estimates. And realizing that the staff, you know, everybody has a really full plate. Um, it can, it can kind of be like a back burner item, but I'd like it to be on the radar, I guess, because I don't think it made this year's goals. So, do you have any further comments, councillor staff? Any, so Sarah had suggested Stewart Park and Fourteenth and Union? Um, go ahead, Karen.
Yeah, I mean, I just heard, you know, support still for Little Lakes, D Street, Valley West, Stewart Park, the Fourteenth and Union, Redwood Park Entrance. Um, D Street and Stewart. I will show you just because we had a little bit more planning. Uh, just sort of what the picture may help or it may hinder the closeness to one oh one. Um, but, you know, this seemed to even be an adequate size, at least for an an off leash area. And it's still, so it would have eight fence, plus you would still have the fence down by the freeway and pretty good visibility up there. It's not to say it's perfect. It is still very close, but the visual might help a little bit to show sort of what you could fit on that site and still have good double secure fencing. Uh, for that. But, you know, then, as was shared earlier, uh, it was not overwhelmingly supported by the neighbors in that region. Um, but I think, you know, especially the first site for a dog park is going to have a lot of people come to it. And we experience that anytime we do a new really cool playground, everybody wants to come to it for a while, and then they find other places and go back towards their own neighborhood, so. But to have one dog park will receive, I think, a lot of use. Um, so, I mean, we could certainly try to narrow down some of those and get some, you know, some kind of light conceptuals for each of those in terms of size.
And I really.
Recommendations.
Yeah, I mean, I've always really liked the um, the D Street Linear Park. I mean, I totally hear the concerns about it being close to the freeway. Um, and I don't know if we, that can be mitigated. Um, maybe it'd be good if we went, um. Emily and Sarah, if we walked it, just to take a a closer look at it. Um, but uh, yeah, I feel like, I feel like we should be, we should consider it as a as a location. Um, and also, too, I mean, I I definitely do still support Little Lakes. I mean, I guess my gut feels like it's going to be a long time. I mean, I've, you know, it's been a couple of years already since I've been on the council, talking about that property. Feels like it's going to be years more. Um, and so, you know, I, and as we uh, continue to try to make progress on that property, I'd like to find something. You know, we could have all, they could all be dog parks. We could have Little Lakes and and some other smaller ones. I think we have enough dogs. Um, okay, so, yeah, so I just want to get to some kind of consensus on, let's, let's just say like two locations. Unless unless you guys want to do something different. I'm just throwing stuff out there.
No, that sounds good. And also, thank you, Karen, for the the overhead visual, because it does, you know, me me thinking about it, I was like, that seems really small. Doesn't seem like anything, but seeing the visual and how it could be offset from the freeway, too. Um, I think that sounds good. So, I mean, I think like the two locations that I would be most interested in would be that D Street run there and then also um, the Stewart Park location. In addition to Little Lakes, but yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I am with Sarah on that. Um, I do like that D Street Linear Park, especially seeing it from above. And um, I think it'd be great to look into Stewart Park as well, in addition to Little Lakes.
Right.
Yeah, all three of those work for me. I think those are all good options.
Councilmember Kinsalazar?
Um, yeah, and I I definitely think, you know, even though I was hesitant for Little Lake, Little Lakes at first, um, if it has already been vetted and seems like it could happen in a reasonable amount of time. I think we should keep it on the table. And then maybe it comes down to a couple of choices, like, do we want this? We might have a site that's more immediately available and we, you know, we might have to throw it out there to see what people want. Do we want to work now on this? Or do we want to continue to wait? Um, so I I agree with looking at those three sites. Um, yeah.
All right. Um.
And also, we have to find money and and we need to also spend some time looking for some money for this.
Yeah, definitely. All right. Um, so good for staff?
Yeah, I think that provides some good direction. Thanks for the conversation tonight.
Yeah. Um, all right. So for, I think our next agenda item is gonna um, take a fair amount of time. So let's go ahead and take a five minute break. We'll come back for our last agenda. Um, is new business, a discuss the potential implementation of a community ambassador program and provide any resulting direction. And I will turn this item over to Vice Mayor Akinsalazar for a presentation.
All right, thank you. And my presentation is brief. Fellow council members, I know we've been here for a while. So um, I'm going to attempt to share my screen and see what, what happens here. Let's see. Um. All right, or is everybody seeing it? Okay. So um, basically what I just want the councils to consider, and I'm just looking for direction on what, you know, how the rest of you feel. If if this is something that we should move forward with um, or not. So basically, a community ambassador program, which would be a possible collaboration between the city of Arcata and Arcata Main Street. So first of all, uh, you know, why a co- a community ambassador? And a lot of communities are doing this as a way to help provide a combination of safety and business promotion. And that's one of the things that I think we've all been hearing is that people aren't feeling safe in in our community in a lot of different areas. And so you'll notice in the description, um, I've mentioned downtown a couple of times. Um, but this doesn't have to be limited to our downtown. I think we do need to start, if we choose to do it, we need to pilot it somewhere. But if it's a successful program, it could expand to cover different areas of the city. But basically, um, by providing this type of program, it will help provide a sense of safety. And also help direct people to local businesses and community events, as well as keep our streets clean. So what is a community ambassador? And basically, it's up for us to decide. But many, um, I researched several different communities and kind of pulled from the programs, the things that I thought were the most important. And I'm not going to go through all the details now, because obviously, we need to decide if this is even something that we are interested in doing as the council. Um, but basically, it can factor as added security. Um, in the programs that I liked, their ambassadors were trained as security guards. And I think that that was important because they know when to call in for help. Um, they're trained to know when to engage with the police for backup, which I'm sure would be much needed. So it would, you know, ensure that our public spaces are safe. Um, they could be observing and reporting unwanted behaviors and addressing low level um, quality of crimes like open containers, smoking, aggressive panhandling. Um, they would not als- they wouldn't just be security, it would also be for hospitality and customer services. So, you know, to work with the members of Main Street or, you know, whatever part of the community they're in. So if it was in Valley West or in North Town or whatever, to work with the business owners very directly to see what their needs are. Um, because we've been hearing a lot from business owners with issues in their businesses and um, safety issues. As well as just encouraging people to shop. And it could also help in with clean streets. One of the things that some of the ambassadors do is like early in the morning, when if if they come on to shift. And again, that would be something that we would decide, what are the shifts? What, you know, what does this job look like? But part of it could be picking up on the streets, trash pickup when when things are slower. Um, and alerting city maintenance to issues that are happening. So that's what it looks like. And I don't know, on my screen, everything isn't really showing, but I can um, tell you, I looked up our current goals. And um, to see like, does this fit in with what what we're moving, what we're moving towards? And I think that, yes, it's it's an important piece of uh, of some of our goals and and puzzles. Um, if you look at these um, for um, four B um, in the, uh, sorry, oh gosh. Um, for infrastructure, this is mentioned in the in the Plaza Improvement Task Force recommendations. Um, five D and economic recovery, recovery strategies to promote businesses and tourism and advertise Arcata as a safe place to shop. And right now, people aren't really feeling that that it's safe. So it does tie into some of our goals. Um, if you look directly at the Plaza Improvement Task Force recommendations, there was, there were five general recommendations. And I think that this easily fits into four out of five of those. Definitely safety regulation, help with beautification and infrastructure, increased programming. If we have more of a sense of of safety and a presence on the plaza, more people will want to be there, which also ties into economic development. Um, doesn't necessarily fit the fifth one about increasing access to the plaza and connectivity to H S U and Creamery. But does meet four out of five, and that was taken from page forty two on the the report. Um, so just considerations for all of us. Is this something that we think would be beneficial to our community? I did, um, I have been talking with the, with Chief Ahern about this to just see if it's in line with what he thinks would be beneficial. And as of our last conversation, he encouraged me to to go forward with it. Um, he also, you know, we talked about oversight for it and that it would need to be kind of a shared oversight with possibly Main Street and the Police Department. And he was willing to help take that on. Um, you know, where would funding come from? I'm proposing that if we're able to, that we use some of our ARPA funding to pay for a pilot program. Uh, you know, if this is successful, it's been successful in other communities, so I don't see why it wouldn't be successful here. And if it, if it was, then, you know, I think that it's our job to to start this and pilot it. And then if it's working, we could reach out to the business owners once we see that it's successful and they they see that it's successful. Um, and figure out how we could share the cost, so it's not just us sharing it the whole time. So, you know, other considerations that we would need to talk about, personnel, job description, where do we want to pilot this program? Um, so yeah, so that that's my presentation, just wanting to get feedback from council as to whether or not this is something that we should. Be moving for- forwards to. So um, I'd be happy to answer any questions or um, yeah, whatever.
It looks like, did we lose uh, councilmember Matthews?
Uh, yes. So I have texted her to see if she needs help.
Okay.
Um, had some audio problems, but here she comes, just coming back in.
Right.
So hopefully, she will be here shortly. And here she comes.
Great. Um. Okay, so we'll bring it back to council. Uh, councilmember Schaefer, you have any thoughts or questions?
Um, sure. Uh, first of all, Stacy, thank you so much um, for, you know, a quick and concise and clear presentation. I mean, that, you know, you you got the point across perfectly. And I I really think this is something that could be really beneficial in Arcata. Um, I talked a lot to people about, you know, even developing someday, uh, down the line, hoping for it. Uh, like a visitor's center with some sort of, you know, museum and stuff like that. But, you know, eventually down the line, you know, having, yeah, a person that maybe if we're piloting it, you know, on the plaza and stuff, could easily, you know, work at a city hall or something. Have a place of staff or stuff, whatever, but ultimately having some sort of like even informational center or kiosk even where, you know, there's information about what what to do downtown. What businesses, what eateries, whatever. Um, but yeah, I think um, piloting this, and especially if we could use ARPA funds. It's very, you know, en- enticing to to try something like this. Um, my one, the only, you know, thing that I would say is my reservation or just to like make sure about, um, just that whoever is doing this job is well-trained in conflict resolution and equity training. And especially like recognizing implicit bias of why you are calling the cops on somebody. Um, because when you often give people the power to police others, they will take that and run and have a power trip about it. Um, and so, you know, I don't want to see negative policing of ourselves, you know, among among our com- community. Um, and so just making sure, you know, who, that these community ambassadors truly are, you know, ambassadors of our community. And that, you know, kind of reflect all of these, you know, ideas that we talk about as a council. And you, you know, that they reflect equity and that they reflect, you know, compassionate response to um, you know, homeless people that might be on the, yeah, I'm going to say plaza. Because we kind of talked about that as a, but wherever they might be. Um, just that, you know, whoever is doing this job is is truly an ambassador and is doing it in an informed way that they understand bias, they understand equity. And that they, you know, aren't, you know, just policing in essence of, you know, policing the community. Um, but besides, I mean, but, you know, that's part of training a a person to do a job and to do it well. And so I think, you know, just finding the right people and training them well is going to be important. But I think having um, something like this in our community could be enormously beneficial. And I I thank you for bringing this before us. Um, and I saw in on the next item, it looks like it could be something that could be funded, but it's kind of off the the line of the ARPA funds. And so I guess just an additional conversation, and that could be something that staff looks at just of, you know, if we can't fund it with ARPA, where where does this come from? How many, you know, how much money are we willing to put in it, basically, uh, as a council, um, to pay for it in our budget? But um, I think it sounds great. So that's what I got.
Thank you. And just to, I, I totally agree with you. Just in my discussions of the program, the, the one thing that everybody, that has, everyone has really agreed upon is that finding the right people will be probably the hardest part of the program. Because originally, I was pitching it as a safety ambassador, because that's what some of the other communities call it. But, you know, we've changed the title to be community and to be, it's, it's not just, otherwise, we could just hire a security guard, right? And, or, you know, more police, and that's not what we're, we're looking to do. So it really does have to be the, the right combination and the right personality that is making our downtown feel safe and vibrant to everyone, you know, including the people that they're quote unquote kind of policing, you know. So I totally agree with that.
Councilmember Goldstein?
Thank you so much for bringing this, Stacy. I think you, you did a lot of hard work. I have a lot of thoughts. No surprise. But I think that I'm, I'm really encouraged by basically every aspect of this except for the safety part of it. I think that there are a lot of great benefits that you talked about in terms of supporting our local businesses, helping people around the, you know, the community. And I really love those ideas. But I don't think this is something I can support in terms of safety. It feels just like adding more police without putting a badge on them, and that's not something I can support. I think, I know we are saying like, we have to find the right people. But I think that policing is not going to solve the problems in our community of any kind, even if it's policing by community members. And so to me, it feels like a Band-Aid fix when people are saying they're unsafe in this community. It's really a coded thing that they're saying to us. They're saying they don't want to look at homeless people. And I'm sorry, I'm just going to be really real about that because I get a lot of emails from folks. Actually, not that many, because I got a lot of folks that want housing and to support homeless people. But I'm just going to say very honestly, if you send me an email disparaging homeless people because they make you feel unsafe because you don't want to look at them, I, I'm, I'm not really going to to, to take that seriously because they have a right to be in this community too. And so I think that's a lot of the safety that I'm hearing lately, and I, I just don't buy it. If we want to fix our safety issues because we don't want people living on the street or we're concerned about their mental health issues or their drug use, then we need to be looking at the root of the problem instead of Band-Aid fixes. And so this isn't like anything specifically, like against this specific program. I'm just, I feel like this is the conversation we keep having again and again is, how do we make people feel safer instead of how do we actually solve our problems? And so I would really encourage us to take a step back and look more upstream. Where is the root of our problem? And is it, and we, we've identified it, right? Those were our council goals. We need to get people housed. We need more mental health services. We need drug treatment services. And so to me, I, I can't get on board with just more policing of our community members. Crimes like panhandling are not crimes to me. Yes, technically, they're illegal, but it's somebody who has no other choice. I don't think any of us would say like, hey, I'm going to give up my day job to stand on the corner and beg people for money. I think most people would agree that that feels really degrading to have to do. So to me, that's not a crime. That's not something that people should feel unsafe around. If somebody asks you for money, you can politely say no. Or you can give them money. I mean, yes, I'm aware that's illegal, but that can be a different conversation. And so we have, I don't know. We are living in a time where we see so many videos of, I mean, well, let's just be honest, angry white people who called the cops because something's making them uncomfortable, right? And it ends very badly for the person that's making them uncomfortable. And to me, this feel, the safety aspect of this feels like another way to do that to sanction people to just call the cops whenever they feel uncomfortable. And so I, I want to, I want to get to the root of our problems. I don't want to put Band-Aids on our problems. So again, I would be super for these community ambassadors supporting our businesses and doing other things that improve our city. But I am not for adding police that are just not wearing uniforms.
And I, and I do absolutely agree with you in that it's, it does, I mean, in a sense, it is, it is a Band-Aid. I'm willing to acknowledge that. But, and I, I do think we need to go to the root of where our problems are. But these are, you know, these are really big, hard, long conversations, and we do, we do have people that need some relief. And, you know, I am not talking about, I, I said aggressive panhandling because, you know, when you get emails from people that say that they have been grabbed and, and chased and different things for refusing, that, that's different. You know, it's one thing to say, you know, yes or no, but to be physically attacked, spit on and such, you know, isn't okay. And, and our police force is spread really thin. So, you know, I just, I do think we have safety concerns, and I, I do think we need to go to those bigger issues as well. But I think it's, it's much bigger than just white people being uncomfortable. I mean, of course, there's always, there is going to be that. But, you know, I'll just bring up a story that's pretty vivid. A couple of weeks ago, I was eating outside at Renata's and a woman came up. There was a table right next to us with a family of four. She pulled her pants down and spread her butt cheeks apart to show us some swords that she had. She, you know, this, this was a pretty intense situation for that family, for us. You know, clearly, she wasn't trying to, it wasn't in a sexual way. She was found out later to be really on drugs were a factor in the situation and not some, you know, other things. So there was more to it. But in that moment, all, all, the only resource we had was to call APD, who happened to be able to come and, and handle the situation. But it would just be nice in those, in those things to have, have more presence and more support. So there, I, I just want to argue against the fact that, that we're just seeing a lot of, that it's just harmless things because there are, there are serious things that are, are happening. There are drug deals in cars going down. They're not necessarily people of, of color doing that, you know? And that's happening right on the plaza. So it'd be nice to have more of a presence, from my opinion, so.
No, and I, I mean, I'm sorry that happened to you because that is a pretty awful experience when you're trying to just enjoy your, your breakfast. But I, I think that like, my, my thinking is that, you know, that person gets, you know, APD comes, they do their thing, they arrest the person, and then they just go back on the street. So because we are talking about spending funds on this, I would really prefer to see our funds go towards something more permanent that keeps the next family who's eating at Renata's to not have that experience. And so, you know, I think, yes, it's comforting in the moment to be able to call, you know, a community ambassador or APD, but then that, that person ends up back on the street doing the exact same thing the next week. And so I'm just, I really am looking for like, long-term solutions that will, you know, get that person help and then keep the rest of the folks that are just trying to eat their breakfast, you know, on G Street to get to enjoy their breakfast on G Street. Because both thing, both groups deserve that, right? Like that lady deserves her, her help and people who are just trying to enjoy their, their Saturday or whatever deserve that as well. I'm just not sure extra policing is really going to change much.
Thank you for, your, thanks for sharing your thoughts.
Councilmember Matthews?
So unfortunately, Stacy, I'm so sorry. I missed that presentation. I was having audio issues and trying to log on and log back off. So I think it seems like there's a lot of really important things brought up by everybody. But I just don't think at this moment, having not seen Vice Mayor's presentation, I'm in a really good spot to weigh in. I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's not your fault that you got bumped out.
You want to kind of quickly do a summation, Stacy, for Veritas' benefit?
Yeah, it, it was just a combo. Bottom line is, it's a combination, like half security guard, half business promoter that would roam a particular area of town and could, you know, provide, if somebody's feeling nervous, it could provide a safe escort to their car or also can promote businesses and what's going on downtown. So it's, it's like a half and half position, and that's pretty much what it is.
Sure. So what are the, I mean, what are the hours that this, this position would be? I mean, is it going to be an evening position? Is it all the time? Is it a daytime position?
So those would be, those would be all details that we would work out if council wants to move forward on it. So I, you know, I spent some, some time doing research, but, you know, not delving too far into it because I don't know if it's something that the whole council wants to do. So like as far as, you know, what type of training, job description, how many people, where? That would, those would all be details that staff would work on and probably with, you know, reach out to Main Street and some of the, the businesses downtown, if that's where we chose to pilot the program. So yeah, there would be, there's still a lot of details that would need to be worked out. But it's mostly just trying to get, you know, get a sense from the council if this is something that we should move forward on or not.
All right. Well, with that context, I will say that I am in favor of moving forward with this, just if not anything but to kind of get some more fact-finding and talk to local businesses and see what it would look like. I agree that it would definitely have to be the right person. I like the idea, you know, of an ambassador, you know, more like letting people, you know, someone during, you know, Arts Arcata, walking around and, and pointing out things that people can do. I know, I feel like Main Street's been doing such a great job having all sorts of events that fill up the plaza. I think it would be wonderful to have, you know, someone. I would love to have like a kiosk that they could be at and be like a central location for people to come and get information on things. You know. So yeah, I definitely think it bears more discussion in moving forward.
Thank you.
Did you have any more thoughts, Councilmember Schaefer?
No, and, and just in the sense that, I don't know, maybe I tried to say it too nice. But yeah, I, I mean, you know, I, I like the partnership with Main Street, and I like the idea of having some sort of community ambassador that could give people directions and information and promote our businesses, especially like Councilmember Matthews just said during, you know, Arts Arcata, everything like that during Farmer's Market, the Sunday art markets that have been going on, having a touch point there. But just to reiterate what I said before and kind of maybe more swing towards what Councilmember Goldstein said, to be, have a lot of scrutiny looking at this policing piece. And whether it's necessary at all, what training that means and what's, what's going on there. And, 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 you know, as I said before, that, that is the part that concerns me about it. But, you know, I think, I don't know, we're going to have another discussion about what to spend the ARPA funds on. So I think, you know, seeing where that falls down to and what kind of things we want to support. I, I think, you know, it, it just depends on where our funding falls to and what we can and can't fund and support, so.
That makes sense. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, I mean, I feel like I'd like to move this idea forward with a, with an emphasis on the community ambassador piece of it. It sounds like we all agree that the community ambassador piece is something we can get behind. And I think it would be an interesting experiment to see if it, you know, helps promote tourism and some economic recovery, helping out our local businesses. So yeah. Yeah, and I don't know, I, and I, yeah, I totally hear the concerns about additional policing. And I don't know how effective the community ambassador would be in that role. I think anybody can, that's on the plaza, can use their phone and call the police if they need help. And the community ambassador can still be there to help people, you know, walk their purchases or their vehicles and stuff like that. So that's how I feel about it. And do we, unless there's any more discussion? I think we should. Yeah, it is, it is in our next conversation, but I'd like to put more of a, I'd like to finalize this a little more because it does seem like we have support. And I think our next discussion is more of a general discussion that we'll probably come back and have a special meeting for in the future. So I'd like to entertain a motion. Go ahead.
Mayor, would you like to take public comment at all?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought we did already. Go ahead. Thank you for that.
Yeah, it looks like we have one at this point. Shashana, do you want to go ahead, please? You'll have two minutes.
Hello. I just think that this is a wonderful idea. Main Street is right downtown on the plaza, and it is that visitor's space that does serve some of that purpose. But it's not really fun to have an office hours open right now. But people have experiences in all the areas that they go to, and those negative experiences really do stick with people. And I think this is an awesome idea of a pilot program that would be wonderful to keep. The idea that this could happen downtown, it could happen in Valley West, I think is really marvelous to keep that downtown area nice with, with picking up, so the, the wonderful CPP buckets and pickers are wonderful, easy. And just having someone out and about doing some of those things as well as keeping an eye on situations. And it's not just that people don't want to look at homeless people. It's as I just saw tonight walking here from the office that there is a guy who was yelling at multiple groups of people who are on the plaza, drinking a beer and trying to pick a fight. And people, numerous people watching on the outskirts of the plaza, tourists who were wondering if someone should call the police. And I called them, and they had already heard from two other people about this guy. And I stuck around for a few minutes, and then they came and checked in with the guy in a few minutes. And I also directed someone to sushi, and I picked up a little bit of litter in the plaza. So I was just walking right before making this comment. I think you can definitely see where this would be a useful thing. And if there was something happening in the afternoon, evening time, that four to nine PM, Wednesday to Saturday, wouldn't that be a great time when so many people are out and about, walking around? And, and just an informed eye on what's going on, someone who was trained to know when to call and assess the situation properly and appropriately and with all of the good mindful processes in, in place. But I think it's a good idea for a pilot and very needed. Thank you.
Thanks, Shashana. Any more public comment?
Just taking one last check. There's, yes, we do. It looks like we have a phone caller. Screening call-in user two, and then we'll have a phone caller user seven next. Please go ahead. Can you unmute yourself, caller? There you go.
This is Harmony Patrol of Arcata speaking. The downtown plaza has been claimed as a ghetto. The kids downtown look at the garbage every day, and why would they have respect for a place? The business community needs assistance ASAP with neighborhood people. How about city council members coming down and having lunch on the plaza? We need to take our plaza back, and there are several ways we can do it. Brick and mortar stores need traffic, more activity and somebody to coordinate that. I'll train the next ambassador, Harmony Patrol, if you need it. Let's do it as a community. Come to the plaza and enjoy it, and let's all take it back. Whatever, by whatever means necessary. We're all in this together. It's the downtown living room of my city and yours. Let's own it. The real problem now is the increased activity by Mephistopheles himself, and he has bad breath. It's called Matt. We have a problem and it needs monitored. I nominate Bart Simpson to hall monitor. Whatever it takes, let's assist APD to get this downtown area, my plaza, cleaned up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have another phone caller. And then another phone caller after that. Please go ahead, user seven. Go ahead, please.
Hello?
Yes, you're good. Go ahead.
Hi, this is a concerned citizen calling. So I noticed that there's lights at the tennis court, but I think the number one priority should be of the Parks and Rec Department is to bring lights to the Arcata skate park.
No, I'm sorry, but this, this comment period is for the agenda item we're currently talking about. If you wait a little bit longer towards the end of the meeting, we will have another comment period where you can talk about anything you want.
All right. I will call back. Lights to the skate park. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, caller. There you go. Go ahead, please. You have two minutes.
Okay, thank you. Um, hi, my name's Ellie Noah. I am a, um, community member in Arcata. Um, a graduate of H S U. And I, I just want to voice again, I know I've called in before and just, um, really reiterated the importance of trained professional mental health support for anyone who may be needing support in our community. I don't think that.
Yeah. Is this about the current agenda item?
Yeah, it is. It is.
Okay.
Yeah, it's about the, um, community ambassador program.
Yes.
Yep, yep, it is. Um, I, I think that it is imperative that we invest adequate funds to support our community, um, from the issues at at their foundation. I think if we have a reactive model that promotes um, reacting to people who may have struggled in our community, it's not going to solve any problems that may arise, um, rather than simply coming to the aid of the most privileged in our community. And so I think that really supporting people from the ground up, whether that's money and funding for mental health support, drug rehabilitation, housing, food insecurity, um, that, those are the things that I personally would like to see funding go toward, rather than, um, a, a perhaps less qualified and trained version of the police, which again, I really think that we can redirect funding from our police budget into mental health support that's going to really strengthen the health, well-being and overall, um, um, safety, I guess, of our community in a way that, uh, is actually supporting every person, not just the people who are able to call someone at any point to keep them safe because that's how our society is currently designed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment?
Taking one less, uh, or one last check, if there's anyone that would like to speak on the community ambassador item. Looks like we have no further comment on this item.
All right. Uh, so bringing it back to council, go ahead, Councilmember Atkinson.
All right. Well, just so that we can, you know, we can move forward, um, I would like to make a motion to that we, um, direct staff to, uh, look more into this type of a program and, um, bring more information back to council.
I will second that.
Um, yeah, I mean, and I feel like we could maybe put more teeth in it, like, um, you know, besides just look, I mean, you've already kind of, I don't know, I feel like we've already kind of looked into it and we already have a cost estimate for the program. So I don't know if we want to, I mean, what do you think, Karen? Can we give more direction?
Always more direction, the better. Uh.
Well, I think maybe, you know, when we go, I know we're not going to probably dig into the ARPA details today, but when we go to dig into them, I think, and we start debating what we want to spend our money on, it seems like, I mean, the council is pretty much aware of the basics of my program and obviously it could be crafted however we choose. But if, you know, so maybe we we just move forward in discussing this when we're debating what we want to do with the ARPA money.
Okay. So we have a motion in a second. Councilmember Schaefer.
But do we have a motion in a second?
Yeah, what was the, sorry, what?
Yeah, because I'm, I, I made a motion to, I motioned.
Meredith seconded. I think you heard a second.
Yeah, I was just directing staff to do more research into it and and Meredith did second that. But then, uh, Mary, you brought up that I had already done the research, so you weren't really sure what staff needed to do, so.
Yeah. Um, that's fine. We can leave it at that. If if that's what you'd like, uh, it's your motion. So we can just have staff, uh, come back with more information.
Then that's my motion. Thank you.
Sounds good. So we have a motion in a second. Um, Councilmember Schaefer.
Uh, no.
Councilmember Atkinson.
Hi.
Councilmember Matthews.
Hi.
Councilmember Goldstein.
No.
Man, it's just, it's just to come back with more information. Uh, I'm gonna vote aye. Um, I really want to, you know, focus on the, uh, the community part of it. Um, I feel like there's a lot of potential there. And, um, I feel like we can do it in a way that's, uh, you know, not going to be, um, adding some kind of quasi-police presence or, you know, intimidating people. Um, and, uh, I feel like we can do it in a way to just, you know, just to be overall over overall beneficial to the community and, um, and I think we're, we have some other things that we're also going to be working on to provide support for the houseless and, um, other people in need. So with that, we will move on to the next agenda item. Which is discuss and provide direction of potential uses for the city's allocation of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds. Do you have a staff report?
Yeah, so we'll just, um, walk through quickly tonight, Mayor and Council, uh, just some of the very basics of what we call ARPA, often the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty one. Um, the, in Congress and President Biden signed on March eleventh, twenty twenty one, a one point nine trillion dollar relief package referred to as ARPA. The preliminary guidance for that was released on May tenth, and that's what we've been working off of. We do anticipate final guidance, uh, on how all of the funds can be used and and additional details on sort of reporting on those, um, uses, um, hopefully within the next month, maybe even by the end of the month. Um, of that one point nine trillion, three hundred and fifty billion was, um, set aside for state, local, territorial and tribal governments. And of that, Arcata has been allocated four point four oh nine oh eight seven million dollars. So fifty percent of that, um, has already reached our bank account, was paid to us in twenty twenty one. And the second installment, the other two point two million, will be coming in twenty twenty two. Um, the US Department of Treasury has, um, submitted, has released some initial eligibility guidance. It is an interim rule. As I mentioned, the final ruling has not come out, but they do have frequently asked questions that are updated weekly and staff has been following those questions as well. The initial funding objectives of ARPA was to support the urgent COVID nineteen response efforts, to replace lost revenue, to strengthen support for public sector and retain jobs, to support immediate economic stabilization for households and businesses and address the sys- um, address the systematic public health and economic challenges, contributing to really disparate impact to the pandemic. The interim rule categories, uh, categorizes eligible expenditures into four categories, to respond to the public health emergency or its negative economic impacts, to respond to workers performing essential work during the COVID nineteen public health emergency by providing premium pay. For the provision of government services, to the extent that the reduction in revenue, meaning reduction in sales tax for us, T O T tax in us, and actually all of our revenues, reductions in those revenues due to COVID nineteen, uh, provision for government services to be able to recoup some of those losses and to make necessary investments in water, sewer or broadband infrastructure. Uh, so we've given you a kind of a large list of potential projects in Arcata. We have put that into two categories, one that we think, um, well fits within the current interim guidelines of the ARPA funds and others that have come to the surface that we think may be able to fit in those categories. Uh, but we would have to do a little bit more staff research. So the types of uses that we've seen, um, so far throughout the nation are responding directly to COVID impact, testing and contact tracing, uh, capital investments in public facilities, uh, vaccination campaigns, um, doing, uh, restrict response to the economic impacts, household and small business assistant programs, uh, relief programs for, um, for individual, we've seen like utility programs, although there are some other funds that have been set aside now for utility relief programs, um, payroll costs to rehire, especially public sector staff that, uh, positions that were frozen or positions that were laid off during the pandemic. Um, direct aid to impacted industries, affordable housing investment, homeless services. Uh, there is a provision for what we talked about as this revenue loss calculation. And so we are waiting to make sure we have the final guidelines and we will make that calculation for the council and bring that back to you as we get further into these ARPA discussions. But, uh, so I won't even go into the details because I will lose all of us, I think. And, um, but there is a, there will be a calculation of that. Um, I anticipate that number to fall somewhere between probably one million to maybe one point six million dollars, um, of lost revenue that the city would be able to recoup. And therefore, then that revenue kind of becomes free for really any of the type of eligible use or any of the types of uses that the council is interested, even if they don't perfectly fit in to the high eligible use categories. Um, water, sewer, infrastructure, projects to improve water quality, uh, reduce, I should say, water pollution, uh, repair wastewater treatment plants, creation of green infrastructure, um, energy resiliency projects we've seen come up in other communities, manage or treat stormwater, uh, water reuse, cybersecurity and projects to address climate change and then direct, um, allocation towards broadband infrastructure. A restriction of the funds, just to kind of keep these high in our mind. We can't deposit into pension funds or reduce any of our unfunded liability endeavors. Uh, we can't offset a reduction in net tax revenue that was the result, uh, from a change in a law or regulation. Uh, we can't use funds as really what we call our non-federal match for eligible other federal programs. And then the funds must be extended between March third of twenty twenty one and December thirty first of twenty twenty six. We do need to obligate them. We do need to, uh, report on the eligible uses by December thirty first of twenty twenty four. But we, we've got a little bit of time that we can spend to make sure that we spend these correctly. And then premium pays, uh, we're looking at those can be retroactive to the start of the public health emergency. Um, so again, just looking through those obligated dates, we need to obligate everything by twenty twenty four. So that's sort of the quick overview. I thought we could spend sort of the majority of the time tonight. I can pull up, I believe it did not print very well for you, uh, the, the draft project list. Um, I was not anticipating to have a detailed, uh, discussion of each of those projects tonight, although we certainly could do that. Uh, but more just to make sure that you, as a council, had a chance to brainstorm, to provide some overall, um, insights or thoughts that you had. Many of you haven't even had a chance to, um, give input into what you'd like to see on that list yet. We have tried to pull, uh, a list of projects from things that came up through the, uh, the budget goal setting, through the stakeholder meetings, uh, through projects that we were unable to fund and then look at those eligible categories within the ARPA funds to come up with the list that's before you. So that's pretty all inclusive. There's a lot more than four point four million dollars there. Uh, all of those, many of those projects are scalable. Uh, don't need to be funded at that full amount. We just kind of put some, um, initial estimates in there of really what a full program might look like for you uh, in those projects. So I'm happy to pull that list up or, um, go a different direction, depending on how you'd like to lead this discussion tonight, Mayor.
So let's ask, um, did everyone in the council get a chance to look through the kind of the staff recommendations or staff requests? It's okay if you didn't. It's, you know, if you need to walk through it or not. So if we've all had a chance to look through it, um, then let's start with, if we have any individual ideas to add to the list. Um, and then, then maybe we can just kind of quickly, like I have some ideas of things that I would like to just, you know, tell staff that, you know, I'd like to move forward with or, um, you know, I feel like kind of lock in. So let's start with Councilmember Goldstein.
Sorry, I was just pulling up the list real quick, going through my pack. Um, is this add or things that I want to focus on or both?
Add. Do you have anything you want to add?
Oh, um, I don't think so, no.
Okay. Councilmember Schaefer.
Um, I don't see on here, but it probably falls under Arcata House partnership, um, something about creating a wa- a transitional camping site, which I know all of us have talked about and are excited about and have been working on. Um, so I don't straight up see that on the list, but I guess that probably falls under Arcata House, maybe.
No, I'm glad you mentioned that because I would have totally forgot. Um, today, um, we had our, uh, homelessness services working group meeting and, um, I've asked that, that very question to, uh, the group, you know, what can we do? To create a, you know, a camp and I, I mean, what I, the number I threw out was, you know, that would serve, you know, a hundred people or more. Because I know, I think we have maybe a couple hundred homeless in the city. Um, and they just felt like, uh, Darlene with Arcata House and, um, some of the other, uh, professionals there felt like a large, a camp that size was, it was just too, it was not manageable. And, um, it would need tons of staff and, um, they felt like if we wanted to do something that would be better to have ten camps of ten people, um, because they felt like that was a more manageable number. Um, and it, then a lot of these people are really high needs, like they have healthcare needs, mental health needs. Um, so it would just require a lot of staff, so. Uh, but we, there are also some, um, Darlene is also working on adding another twenty or so beds at her Boyd Road property. And, uh, we had a conversation about creating a safe parking area. So I think, uh, yeah, talking with ARPA funds, that maybe those are some things we can contribute to.
Okay, perfect. Yeah. And, yeah, I think, yeah, camping slash safe parking, especially, you know, with the emails and comments we received about the situation down at the Community Center Health Park parking lot, too. Um, just having, yeah, some safe parking, camping and, yeah, a hundred seems like a lot, but maybe, yeah, like ten to twenty five is is more doable. And I think anything is, is good. So, um, that's, yeah, that's the one thing I don't want to see added, but I think a lot of these things fall under the scope of, you know, um, but are also Arcata House has a lot to do, too. So, um, you know, if we could fund it separately also, but, yeah, so nothing else to add, I think.
Right. Did you have something, Karen?
Um, no, I just, just to make sure to clarify that what they are talking about would be, you know, kind of ten two-person, very low barrier shelters that would just be located on the Boyd Road, on their Boyd Road site, but it would be separate from their concrete sheltering. So I think much more in line with what we've talked about as being low barrier transitional housing, not exactly in a tent because we want them to make it there through the winter, um, but in in some sort of hard covered, you know, small barrier free space.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for that. Um, Councilmember Atkinson.
I don't have anything to add. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Matthews.
Yeah, um, I would like to see something added that really addresses climate change and, um, green energy infrastructure. And what we can do.
We do have an item on there that is, uh.
My eyes are very bad.
Um, City Hall Heating and Ventilation converts south side of City Hall to all electric heating.
Okay.
Um, there's one, so there's one item kind of along those lines. Um, okay, so we can, we can add that to see, um, that's something that we can qualify for. So. Yeah, I mean, I'm just trying to think the best way to go about this. Uh, we don't have, you know, um, doesn't sound like we have any new ideas in addition to what's here. Um, but you know what? Let's, I guess, I, I think the best thing to do is to have a special meeting just to talk about this because it's such a large sum of money. And, uh, that would also give everybody more time. You know, this is our opportunity. Um, this is, doesn't come around very often, if ever, uh, a pool of money like this. And this is our opportunity to do projects we think will benefit the community. Um, so we'll work on scheduling a special meeting just to discuss this topic and then that'll give us a little more time to discuss stuff. Yeah, so I don't know. There, I mean, there's a lot of things on here, like, um, Valley West Neighborhood Support, um, Economic Recovery. I definitely like all this stuff about adding more personnel. Um, I'd like to see us add as much personnel as we can, just to take off some of the workload of our current staff and, uh, maybe, you know, get caught up or get ahead on some things around the city. And, um, yeah, so I guess we'll, we'll leave it at that. We'll do a special meeting and then have further discussion on this. Do we have any public comment on this?
There any public comments? Yes, we do. Is that you us? Is that you us?
As of Arcata, Council, I'm so happy. That after thirty years of experience, which I'm now as person who's in our community. That you have an opportunity to do something substantial with. Our situation as it is all over the country. I want you, as you, to consider these funds, consider. The four objectives, the four pillars of freedom. The first pillar of freedom is the freedom from want of potable water or nutrition, food. The second pillar of freedom is the right to a living wage job and the dignity of work. And the third pillar of freedom is the right to help, mental health, physical health and all help. That helps you to create your wealth. Your health is your wealth. And. The right to a safe, inclusive space to live. In peace and comfort and dignity. A home, a house, and that comes from policy. We have an opportunity. To consider these four pillars of freedom as you make your decision. On how to move us into a green, clean, safe, inclusive space, free from intimidation, harassment. I have a dream for my city tonight, Council. That on the perimeter of our city, a post be placed. Upon the post, affixed the sign stating clearly and eminently. City of Arcata, a human rights violation-free zone. With the numbers of section statute during this place there upon it, so that the whole city can celebrate our humanity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse us.
Does anyone else wish to speak on this item? No more public comment on this item.
Right. Hey. Next, we will move on to oral and written communications. This time is provided for people to address the council or submit written communications on matters not on the agenda. At the conclusion of all oral and written communications, the council may respond to statements. Any request that requires council action will be set by the council for a future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers addressing the council may be limited to three minutes, but the maximum five minutes and a time limit on the overall length of oral communications may be imposed. Uh, do we have any public comment?
I guess not. Apparently any public comment.
Right. So we have council and staff reports.
I just have one quick announcement uh, to Nightmare and Council, and that is that the Equity Arcata Network Manager position was posted today on the H S U website. Uh, that position is going to be housed out of H S U. This go around the past couple of years, the city has held that contract. Uh, but we're going to move it. Um, H S U is going to add additional funding to it, so it will be a full-time benefited position offered at H S U. And will support Equity Arcata's network. So anyone who's interested and has a background in diversity, equity and inclusion work. Like to support Equity Arcata's network, please jump onto the H S U website and check out the job.
Alright, great. Um, do we have any reports from council? Uh, how about Councilmember Matthews? Anything you'd like to report at your first meeting? Whatever you want. No? Alright. Councilmember Schaefer.
Um, just one small update, uh, recently installed in partnership with Road Coast Energy Authority, uh, with R C A, which is the board that I'm on. Uh, four new charging stations at the community center. Um, so a total of eight char- cars can be charging at once over there and it's a nice new. Addition and hopefully is helpful to our community and attracts folks and makes it an easy stopping place for those traveling with electric vehicles, so. Right on Arcata, right on R C A.
Great. Councilmember Goldstein.
Uh, nothing to report. Thanks.
Councilmember Atkinson.
Um, no, nothing to report.
Alright, can I have any report? Uh, I just want to, you know, give a big welcome to Councilmember Matthews. It's nice to have a. Complete council now and um. Yeah, looking forward to the next uh, year and a half. Serving with you. And with that, uh, the meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody.